Record all of it.
Good evening, it is six fourteen and I'd like to convene this meeting in the Board of Education. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance and.
Why don't you just.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercio.
Here.
Dr. Violet Jimenez-Sinn.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Conley.
Here.
Let's start with a long meditation. Do we have any public participation?
So it looks like there are three phone numbers filed in, the first one is an eight six zero that ends in two eight.
Good evening, thank you.
If you would say your name.
My name is, my name is Robert Smedley and I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak publicly. I, I call this evening because I am incredibly discouraged, undiscouraged, I'm disappointed, and quite frankly, I am disgusted as well. Recently, the change for the facilities department has brought out some needed positive changes in our school district that I am willing to embrace and that I actually think are, are a great decision. We've brought some great people on board who I think are going to help make some good changes in our school district. I do however question some recent decisions and motives and question what direction are we actually going? There's been some hiccups, there are hiccups along the way with change, I understand and respect that, and I'm one of the people who's there to help fix, guide, and move people forward. However, I am absolutely disgusted because I took a week of vacation this week. I don't normally take vacations, I usually hold on to my time, as a matter of fact, I have sixty, six zero plus built up vacation days. I use my time wisely when I can because I care about what I do and I don't like to miss work, but I decided to take a break. On Friday, I received an email stating that MIS would be packing up my office computer items and move them for me to my new location. I don't understand the angst and the all of a sudden speedy nature that this needed to be conducted. When I stopped by the high school tonight, my office was in absolute disarray, not the tech's fault, not MIS's fault. However, I feel that I should have been afforded the opportunity as a professional to move my office myself. Incred- incredibly disrespectful, incredibly. Thank you for your time, I appreciate everything that everyone does on the board.
So we have somebody, it's a seven number that ends in, it looks like four zero?
I believe it's a number that ends in four zero. I believe it's star six to unmute.
Yeah, it's star six to unmute.
Yep, eight six zero ends in a four zero.
You just kind of hit the star six to mute yourself now.
Yep, next number is an eight six zero phone number that ends in four six. Star six to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak during public participation. Again, that's an eight six zero phone number that ends in four six.
If you'd like to say something, please hit star six and unmute yourself. Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, thank you, there are a couple of short presentations that I have, I'm going to start first with our preschool presentation. I wanted to give you an update on the status of our, well, what our numbers are currently in the preschool and actually one of our proposed strategies to increase those numbers over the next four or five weeks. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Badentop, Terry Turcot, and Danielle Singleton.
Good evening, this is a very good opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are going to be sharing a Google slideshow with you.
I pulled up three slides here, there we go.
Okay, so we wanted to review our enrollment numbers for September and for October and our current numbers right now. So if you'll see for September twenty twenty coming in, we separated out by the different combinations in our preschool. So you'll see that the Board of Ed School Day, which would be a full day slot, we currently had forty-six out of one hundred and twenty school readiness slots in September, which was thirty-eight point three percent of our, our slots. For part day, which is our, our half day sessions, we had fifty-five out of one hundred eighty-eight school readiness slots filled, which was twenty-nine point three percent. We had sixty percent, or sixty students that were receiving services, they were special ed students. And we also had our key program, we had thirty-one identified children and eleven peer models, for a total of two hundred and three students that were attending our preschool programs. In October, we had fifty-two of our hundred and twenty full day slots filled, which was forty-three full, three percent, with a slight increase from September. For our part days, we had sixty-one out of one hundred eighty-eight of our school readiness slots filled, which was thirty-two point four percent. And then for our special ed students, we went from sixty to eighty-four students who were receiving services. For our key students, we had thirty-three identified children and then thirteen peer models, and then we had an increase of about forty students in October, and we had two hundred and forty-three students attending our programs. So we do have a hybrid model where parents are able to connect remotely from home, we also have the option for parents to send their students to school. So despite our, our hybrid model with allowing them to work from home, it's been very difficult for us to increase our enrollment.
So what we tried to do for you guys tonight is really compare some of the community programs with CSDMB as far as a couple of different areas. And so what, what we did, we looked at the data from comparable enrollment programs, programs that had enrollment numbers that were closer to the Board of Education. And then you can see for enrollment through September, and again, I don't have the data for October yet from our community programs, so really I could only compare September. So the Board of Education was at thirty-three percent enrollment capacity and the community programs averaged about forty-five percent. And that's throughout all of our school readiness programs, so you know, there's different reasons for some of that, but the Board of Ed was about twelve percent different from the average of the community programs. When we look at new enrollment, the Board was at thirty-three percent and the community was at sixteen percent. And so we were up about seventeen percent for new enrollment, and I believe that's a big part of marketing and the team kind of looking at different avenues and reaching out to families. And we'll talk more about that in a little bit. And then as far as the funds that we were granted, Office of Early Childhood has done things a little bit different this year, especially due to COVID, and it's really kind of measuring things in a different way. But out of our hundred percent that we would like to get, obviously for the Board of Education funds, we were granted sixty-one percent in September. So obviously falling short based on the enrollment that we're taking in, and the community programs averaged about seventy-four percent of their full allotment of funds, bringing it to about a thirteen percent discrepancy. What we were able to do was to look at the October funds for the Board of Education, as you can see at the bottom that there's a seven point one percent increase, and that's due to the numbers increasing at the Board slightly for the month of October. Again, I don't have the data yet from the community programs as they'll get it to me this week, but you know, hopefully we'll see an increase in, in others as well. But I think we're on the right track, but it's been, it's been proven to be very difficult to get enrollment, certainly with the different strategies we've tried.
So we do have an update on our technology information, the iPads have arrived and they will be given to each student to be used during hybrid and remote learning. Currently, families are using the devices they have, or we have provided some packets to families who have requested them. We've sent home and have provided about fifty-five different packets for families that have requested them. Experiences are made for children throughout the day, they're able to use their device synchronously and asynchronously. So for example, on a Wednesday, when we are full remote, there is a schedule that's sent home to families and there are some Google leads where families can check in with the teacher. And then there are some activities that the families are working with, alone with their students, and there's just that check-in in the morning and the afternoon. We are currently using CSO in, in our classes and, and we've been successful with that model. Parents have been able to send some work samples back out to teachers and teachers are able to provide some feedback to parents and, and just moving those students along and able to plan for the next day of their lessons based on how the students are doing. So our, our pads are coming soon, they are, we're very close, we're hoping to get those out to our families very soon. So our goal is to engage as many preschool students as possible in our district programs. For our kindergarten readiness, we'd like to have them ready for kindergarten, all of our students are coming to us. For social, emotional, and executive functioning skill development, and for establishing those attendance patterns and routines and habits of mind. So some of the strategies that we've implemented to increase enrollment throughout the month was we made personalized phone calls to families to encourage registration and participation. We use some staff from Central Registration, we also use some teachers who have those connections and those relationships with families already to talk to them and to let them know when it's safe to come into the buildings and to encourage their participation. We've also had interviews with the New Britain Herald and the Hartford Current, and we've had featured articles that were published throughout those newspapers. We have placed preschool banners in parks and recs, through parks and recs, they've put them in the different parks throughout the city, and we've also put some in our elementary schools. We've posted information on social media, we've had marketing flyers that have gone out in Spanish, English, and Arabic. We've also individualized letters to parents of students that were not registered with disabilities, trying to encourage them to send their students to school to get their, their services that, that were necessary. And we've also had our central registration staff follow up with families that were previously expressing interest to see if they had changed their mind, or if they would like to come at this time, if they'd like to come remotely, or they would like to come in, in person. So those were just some of the strategies that we've, we've done to, to increase enrollment this month. So moving forward, our proposal to the board this evening is to charge but suspend collection of parent fees for the remainder of this school year for enrolled families and newly registering families. It will not exceed the state recommended cap size of sixteen. For prior invitation, we have children turning three who are, we're looking for a priority for our students. So our priority students would be students that are turning three, who are currently receiving birth to three services and they qualify for special education services this year. We would like to prioritize our EL students and our returning four-year-olds not yet registered. For our remaining slots, they will be awarded on a first come basis until the slots are filled. We have about ninety slots to fill, and we would like to utilize a waitlist to secure spots for next available openings. So this is our ask of the board this evening. You know, we're able to answer any questions that you may have.
Could I just ask for clarification? Chris, can you explain just about, again, I, I think part of it's important that they know what, what, what the dollar signs will look like if we forego the cost. But I think that the benefit outweighs the cost, so can you just go over a little bit what we talked about on Friday?
Sure, so the way that OEC is kind of counting, uh, let me rephrase it, they're not going by slot utilization like they normally would be, but what they're doing is counting the equivalents of children. So as children come into a classroom, it could be any classroom, they count the first twenty children throughout your program as one classroom equivalent and they find that accordingly. And so they keep doing this, adding up to whatever enrollment you can get. And the struggle that we're finding is that, number one, we're, we're not getting enrollment to begin with because parents are fearful, things like that, which is understandable. But we're also not getting fees charged or collected for some things because of various reasons, you know, parents are keeping them home but want to keep their spot, or you know, if we have to close or different things. And so what we're trying to do is think outside the box and really kind of say, okay, in this pandemic, during these times, what can we do to really service our families and our children and really have them come to our program, feel safe, you know, without having to worry so much about the financial burden of that. And so that was what was discussed to bring up that we would, we would waive that fee for them, we still have to, you know, do contracts, but we would waive that fee for those first ninety children to incorporate bringing them into the program and letting them understand that it's safe and that there's different protocols in. And with our marketing and different things, hopefully we can get the numbers that we need to at least get our full, our full funding through school readiness. And then we would just right now have to meet the costs as far as tuition collected from the families. And that would be for this year is what we're looking at for this school year. So you know, we're taking a hit either way, so we're trying to be flexible and look at, you know, how can we get them the help that they need, the education that these kids need, and get them into our doors.
Chris, can you give folks an understanding of what we get from the state for each child who is enrolled versus what we're getting in parent fees for that child on a monthly basis on average?
Yeah, so definitely the, I don't have all, you know, the numbers in front of me right now, so I apologize for that. But certainly for, for, for tuition, it's a sliding fee scale, so it could be anywhere from eight dollars to ninety-five dollars for many of our families. Whereas, and that's per week, whereas per month, we're getting about eight thousand from them as reimbursement from school readiness. So really on that end, it makes more sense for us to get our school readiness dollars in place and get our full funding from school readiness and take that little bit of a hit on the parent fees, because they all, the fees go by their family size and then their income. And so that's a lot, a lot less that we're probably taking out in hopes that we can fill on the other end.
So just, it's eight thousand per year, so that's roughly a thousand dollars a month for, from the state. And some parents are paying eight bucks a week, so that would be thirty-two bucks per month. So the trade-off of the thirty-two bucks in order to get a thousand bucks is the.
Is a very big difference, yeah.
Now, when you suspend collection, are you also still enrolling people in their kids? Do we do that? We don't do that?
We don't.
No, we don't do that for the board, no.
Yeah.
And then just a question of, have you had any conversations with the community providers about this? Are they going to feel like all of a sudden you're undercutting them by giving people free about this?
I personally have not yet, no.
Wait, it's not to you first.
We did discuss that and we're going to, we're going to present to you first and see, see what we've got from there.
Yeah, I mean, so the, the other big issue here is that when you still are a four-day-a-week program, nobody there on Wednesdays, it's, it still doesn't work for our parents to use this, it's tied to their work.
Are they, I mean, they still have the option of doing that one day a week in the YMCA at the school. So you know, there might be a fee associated with that, but that's something that we can talk about too, you know. So they do have an option of doing a full day, and maybe it's not their work day, but it's every day Monday through Friday, and they can use the YM for the Wednesday. And, and I think that the community was doing better because they do have those schedules that a parent, a working parent outside the home. And I think that's what we're taking a hit, that and I will say too that we are, we are not saying all students can have transportation, but hardship cases, we are saying yes, we're going to transport the students. Because we're not trying to put any barriers at all for our parents. We still probably are not the most marketable program because ours already do compare to ARA, the YW, you know, et cetera. But at least this is something more, we know the kids are home.
So is that, if you were kids, is it all the same number, same number of staff or are we down on?
We do have the same number of staff right now, some are working flexibly, you know, doing some of this parent outreach for us and doing that if the numbers don't warrant it. And we, and we knew that we could borrow some of our pre-k teachers if needed for our kinder, we have not had to do that yet. Because we want, we don't want, we don't want to do any permanent moves because if they do come back, you know, we, we won't have that, so.
And flip side, when more people are involved, if the pandemic heats up and we end up doing all virtual plans there that we've already got, everybody's sort of used to it and all that, so.
Yeah, it's, and, and again, it's week to week, right, but we can get another month of, of being in person and we can bring in three-year-olds or four, or four-year-olds and quite honestly, we're really looking at our B's, our B3s, our Ls, and our kids with special needs first. And then, but we, we want to be fair to that, the invites will go to them personally, and then whatever's left will fill up on a first come first serve. But if we can get them in for a month and they connect with an adult. A dad. Yeah, yeah, that's a bad. We're trying not to be the target.
It's a loner, but you know, you get.
What I can say to that though, just to add, is that the community programs are excited about the iPads coming to students, especially like the Y who has kids coming after school and things like that or working during the day, they're excited about that too because they've been working with kids on no devices trying to get them either services at their location or different things, so I know that some of them are excited about that.
I was going to say, you talked about the low end of the eight dollars a week, but even at the high end, we're only talking about a hundred dollars a week or four hundred and change a month. So it would still be, even if we put that as a hit, we're still getting more back from the state. But I also, I also think that a, like, I know that even in distance learning last year, my daughter was in the preschool program and it definitely provided some structure and some needed interaction with people who were outside the home and not on her dad and even through a camera interacting with peers. So just having those opportunities for some of these kids, I think is important. It's not the same as in person, but, and it's definitely not the same, I can't imagine the preschool is anything they get used to, but it's something that is interacting around here, so I, I think it's worth doing this.
I mean, I just feel like it's all, it's so difficult, especially for the working parents because in everything else that's going virtual, there's still going to be childcare. So the parents are going to have to work that for them because they know that they still have a spot, which is what we're looking to do if we go to in that place. But I think anything we can do to help the parents out, parents who are out of work, parents who are struggling right now, we're helping financially, we've got a program in here, anything we can do to ease that, ease that feeling is worth it.
And Diane, I, I might say too, you know, if in the event we do have to go full remote, and again, it all depends on, on the doctor's call, we don't, we don't really know, but you know, that's not to say that our partners with the YMCA who have been, you know, can't help to maybe kick in and make sure that if we're keeping kids apart, we're keeping them farther apart, we have more people to distribute kids to, do you know what I mean?
I would say, I was just considering, like, for example, parents who may not make a lot of money, you know, the difference between an eight-dollar a week program and then like a community program, it may cost five times, ten times that, will they still be able to spend the same amount? Or will there be something in place to help them financially if they got different, if that were the case?
And I think that that's, I, Devin sent me an email today, I am starting to look at ways, if some parents have the scholarship for, are looking for scholarships, dollars, how we might help our parents who need help. And that might just be Jeff's foundation, it might be something, right, of staff.
Actually, once they get into the community program, they would be able to help with that as well.
Staff too. Thank you guys. Any more questions?
And a motion to add that to the agenda?
We could, we weren't sure how, how to proceed with this, but yeah.
Yeah, we need to add it to the agenda, we probably should, it's a business question.
Right.
Just don't let us leave that hanging.
Okay. Can you add, can they just vote on it later?
Well, yeah, yeah, a motion to add an item to the agenda, discussion and action on waiving preschool fees for the remainder of the school year. Motion to add. I honestly don't know if I can have that, I'll have to work it out.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion.
Just to add you.
Just we had a, a, and questions or concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we vote?
Can I just finish up with one of the others, just small things? At every level of the organization, we do have strategy groups in place now to reengage the disengaged, right? We have it pre-k, we've got it elementary, and we have a. We have it pre-k, we've got it elementary, and we have a secondary. I talked very briefly to you just before about, uh, face the Live event, what we'll be doing. I'll invite you all to it, um, in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, we recognize, we recognize this disengagement. It's not the same reason as it was last year. Last year was a lot to do with technology. That's not the issue this year so much. Now it's just getting kids kicked in. Um, I did put, um, for you here, there's a couple of things. A new report that we've added to the, for the board is to look at our COVID rates by school. Um, it's better for you to look at it electronically, I promise, because to try to read it otherwise, it's impossible. So I wanted you to know about that. Food distribution. Um, when our cohort A or cohort B leave, they do leave with five meals with them. And, you know, they take that with them so that they're suit for them over the coming days. Um, and that we are moving on to public safety, of course, at the high school, which was brought up by, I believe, a resident a couple of months back. We're a little unsure about that. So I did give you an update on the status of that. And that's about it. Oh, the last, the last thing is I have the meeting. I've met with about thirty pre-k through twelve teachers over the last two weeks, um, to just get feedback on the growing pains of this hybrid environment, how we can help. And I think we're coming around to a couple of strategies that might help our teachers. Maybe reduce stress a little bit. More to come on that. So that's about it.
All right, um, maybe reports.
Finance, they're not really categorized as finance, but there was a lot of academic approval for some critical items that are unconsent. There is a walk-in. Hold on a minute. You know, get away from the money. It is, um, a million dollar, right? Yeah, million dollar funding through general improvement to Alliance District's school building grant. These funds are to be used for school buildings and ground repair and improvement that are not reverberal through other office of school construction grant. The administration of the public education approval for twenty twenty-one Alliance grant.
Okay. Do we have, we should, and that, can you do this, Dawn? Okay.
So both can you add that to the agenda for us as well?
That's fine.
Okay. Can you stand? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you vote? Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Um, yeah, anything else?
Yes, um, we have a few things. Um, we can't intend to put personnel. And we found one walk-in for personnel for absolutely.
Um, so, yeah, that can be in the book?
Need that we, that we send to...
Okay. Any questions? On the favor of the audience on the agenda?
Just for clarification, the agenda, he's just the, well, the state division.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Okay, I guess you can do this, Dawn. Okay, um, also?
They'll report it this time.
Okay, direct one?
We have quite a few things on the, um, agenda, um, for food, including, um, several different professional development things, um, like professional development, proposal, uh, proposal, responsibility, and, um, textbooks for our world language program that, um, frankly, shame, just hasn't been able to be done before. So we will be, uh, all those things out here.
And, uh, all the reports?
I mean, I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but tomorrow is election day. I know. You might have seen some ads, um, and regardless of who you're supporting at the state, federal, or local, well, not local, but the state or federal levels, please, everyone go out and vote. That's all, if you haven't already.
Thanks.
I know.
Appreciate it, everybody.
I just wanted to say, hey, someone's now, yeah, with everything that's going on that people are, the teachers and they're like, it's out of the house, and then when I think about it, then I pick me up for us.
Okay. Any other reports? All right, let's move into the presentation on the overview.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Anne.
I, okay, I'll share my screen and the presentation. So this presentation is to provide an overview of the evolution of the food service program from two thousand and seven to present. During the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight school year, the State Department of Education conducted a comprehensive audit of the school district's food service program. The district failed the audit and I was assigned to work in collaboration with the State Department of Education to make the necessary changes to bring the district in compliance. In two thousand and sixteen, under my recommendation, New Britain was among the first districts to implement the community eligibility provision. Since that time, I've taken responsibility for all aspects of the program and have helped it become a well-managed, profitable arm of our food service program. The child nutrition programs offered in the district include the school breakfast program, the lunch program, the after-school snack program, the fresh fruit and vegetable program, the dinner program, and the summer food service program. On this slide, we have a ten-year financial history. Looking at our fund balance in fiscal year two thousand and ten, eleven, we see a eight-hundred-and-eight-thousand-dollar fund balance. Moving forward to two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, that is the first year that we implemented the community eligibility provision and we see a three-point-eight-million-dollar fund balance. Fast forward into today, we see a ten-million-dollar fund balance. These funds can only be expended on our food service operations and we're currently looking at formalizing a capital improvement plan, which we will further discuss on a slide further ahead in this presentation. One note that I did wanna make, looking at the profit-loss column, if we look at two thousand and eighteen, nineteen versus two thousand and nineteen, twenty, we do see quite a jump in the profit. And I just wanted to make a note that that is due to the COVID nineteen emergency feeding program. Um, and we would normally see one to two million dollar profit. And once we resume back to our normal operations, I believe that's the number that we'll see again. So in two thousand, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to point out, just in case people missed it, if you look at that year one and you look at the jump just from the previous year, which was a high part, a high point previously, the four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, looking to start that community eligibility program, which, uh, it was just a fantastic way not only to help improve our school lunch, but it destigmatized school lunch by making it eligible for everybody. Just that one year over just stood out to me and I just, sorry for interrupting, but I couldn't help but bring that out.
Thank you. As previously mentioned, in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, the State Department of Education conducted an audit of the district's child nutrition program and the district failed the audit. Um, then in two thousand and seven, two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, they conducted a follow-up progress audit and we passed and we approved the new district process. We experienced many issues prior to the implementation of CEP. Some of these include the free and reduced applications not being submitted by parents. The students accumulated large outstanding balances. There was an inability to collect outstanding balances. These outstanding balances could not be paid from, from the cafeteria fund and it was the district's responsibility to cover these outstanding balances. In the slides ahead, we'll look at areas that have had a positive impact on the lunch program and how we will move forward to continue to grow our program. Some of these areas include the community eligibility provision, the centralization of program responsibilities, the centralization of the food service management company oversight, promotion and development of the program, as well as expansion and growth of the program. I'll leave this slide up a minute. There's just a bit of information, so I'll give you a minute so that you can read the slide. Okay, so as you can see, there are many benefits to having the community eligibility provision in place in the district. These are the applications that were required to submit annually to the State Department of Education. We've got the school nutrition program application. We have three inner-school alignment. We have the summer food service program application. We have a sixth sense certification. We've got the fresh fruit and vegetable, the dinner program, the healthy food certification, the community eligibility provision, and the Buy American Act. And a note, um, that failure to submit program applications and reports in a timely manner result in an audit finding. The State Department of Education requests a corrective action plan and may take fiscal action when an audit finding occurs. There are several state and federal requirements shown below that need to be prepared and submitted to the State Department of Education on an annual basis. So these, um, documents listed here are documents that I prepare annually. Some are posted on the website and some we need to, um, post on our website. We have state and federal reporting requirements. On the left, you'll see a list of annual reports and on the right, we have a list of monthly reports. I just wanna make a note on the monthly reporting. The ED one oh three is a claim reimbursement form, so for all of our programs, I need to enter the meal counts for each site. Then they need to be verified. I have to reconcile and then I submit them to the state. Oversight of our food service management company. So on the left, we have a list of documents that I have to submit annually to the State Department of Education for, in regards to our food service management company. We do have to go out to bid every five years. I have to meet on a monthly basis with our food service company. I have to complete an onsite review form for both the breakfast and the lunch program, which consists of observing both breakfast and lunch service at each site. And then I have to complete the required State Department of Education forms. I also have to complete the form, um, for the food service management company on an annual basis. I manage the cafeteria fund. I make the deposit. I enter the invoices. They're processed for payment. I track all revenues and expenditures. The account is reconciled on a monthly basis. I ensure that we follow all federal procurement standards and I apply for and track all of our mini grants. To future promotion and development of the program, we will continue to work with the school nutrition consultants. Once we reserve, resume our normal operation, we'll continue with taste testing and promotion days. And one note to make is that the district has been recognized by the Food Management Magazine as being one of the most innovative food service during the pandemic. That's a great accomplishment on our part. Future improvements, expansion and growth of the program. We are in the process of developing a capital improvement plan, which will be presented in the future. And due to the growth of the program, we are looking to expand to meet the current needs and to continue to grow by building a warehouse and a central kitchen in the district. And that completes the presentation.
Now, I know way back, it feels like two years ago that we approved the payment for class. We just started building storage to get the food off the floor, out of, out of the hallway. Are we able to use any of that ten million to up our, um, like organic offerings to our students? Or like different food stores? Or is that up to the vendor to do that?
We can certainly do that and, and, um, I do wanna make a note that we are currently, uh, purchasing any items that we can that meet the USDA standards that are organic. We do purchase organic. Um, of course, that doesn't apply right now where we are, um, still serving under the emergency feeding program. So the meals are prepackaged. But once we do resume our normal operations, we will continue to purchase organic and anytime again.
And when you say organic, it's like not project organic. It's pure organic, not just one thing in the label. I mean, I know that's not due as ever, as ever.
Correct.
But we could use some of that ten million, not just for facilities updates. We could use it towards food purpose.
Absolutely, and that is our intention. We are looking at what the consultant who started, but we, we're kind of at a standstill again due to the emergency program that's in place right now. But that is correct. We're looking at our, our meals, our offerings. We're looking at targeting the middle schools and the high schools, um, with increasing our, um, our offerings. I, we do realize that there are some issues with the older students and the portion sizes and the kids not being satisfied. So we are working on that. So the goal is to continue to meet the USDA standards, but somehow incorporate additional items that we can offer, uh, to the students. So absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Diane, um, is there a standing place to receive feedback from parents or students on what they're receiving? How do you plan to receive that?
Absolutely. So there are committee meetings. Again, right now, they're not being held. But yes, there are committee meetings where parents and students are part of, of the committee and, um, they, they are able to voice any concerns or any questions or make any requests. Um, also, the promotion days that are offered by witnesses are all suggestions that they receive from the students. And then, and then they incorporate them into their menus. And of course, if, if they receive positive feedback, they will continue to serve them or they tweet them or, you know, whatever it is that they can do to, um, you know, for the students so that, um, they can continue to engage them and offer, offer meals that, that are pleasing to them. But we do have intentions of issuing a district-wide survey. Again, once we resume normal operations, we will be doing that as well.
Yes, um, where are meals currently prepared and how much of a load will the central kitchen, uh, take on?
So, um, currently, um, we have, we have the high school, we have Roosevelt. And, um, and what, what's happening is, and the main hub right now is, is the high school. They're preparing the meals and then they're being trucked out to the locations. So the central kitchen, um, will obviously prepare all meals for all schools. And then from that central kitchen, they... and then from that central kitchen, they will be trucked out to the locations. And what will happen is with the central kitchen, we will, we'll have 10,000 square feet of kitchen area. So we will be able to increase our production. We'll be able to make more foods in-house, prepare more meals in-house. And we'll be able to actually be a little more creative also with our offerings because we'll, we'll have more room for storage and just more room to prepare the meals.
I was gonna say, I know that there have been some communities that have explored with the idea of bringing back, like the in-school kitchen, but I know with our facilities, that's not necessarily the most feasible route to go. But I'm excited that the centralized kitchen may afford us some similar opportunities for a lot more pressure-cooked, same-day-prepared things. I just had a quick question about the oversight slide. You said the onsite review forms that you have to fill out, is that, is that a onsite visit that you have to use each program per month? And how many different sites are we talking about? I'm just trying to imagine how much time you have to spend running around.
Sure, so yes, so basically that does consist of me going, we have eighteen sites. So I have to visit all eighteen sites, I have to go to observe their breakfast, while they're serving breakfast and while they're serving lunch.
Every month?
It, it's twice a year.
Okay, okay, cute.
So, but it is time-consuming because it is, it's eighteen locations.
Yeah.
So eighteen days that I have to take, that I have to observe breakfast and then lunch. So, yeah.
I just wanted to commend you for the hard work and all you've done to bring action. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Anne, I just want to point out, look at the Facebook feed after, just so you can get some comments. Some of the families care about this, right? This is a, it's a topic that's put through the people's heart.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Let's move into consent agenda. We've all had kids to look at the consent agenda, is there anything that anybody wants to pull off the consent agenda? Is there a discussion? None. All in favor of the consent agenda? Nope, we just, we pass one vote in favor of the consent agenda. It's passed. Okay, let's move into business. Moving to the calendar.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-one Board of Education meeting calendar.
Folks who don't have it in front of them, it basically has us continuing meetings the way we're doing it now during lecture hall. If we are so lucky is to have the pandemic received and be able to resume in-person meetings with an audience. So, any questions about the agenda?
I know there was recently something raised about meetings that start before six and I know that we've sort of, since we don't, you know, conduct regular business at our, at our committee meetings, I think we would not typically call them at six or later. But I was wondering about the four, we felt we should bump those to the six o'clock time. Just move those forward by a half hour each.
The committee meetings?
The committee meetings.
I would agree with you.
So change those five thirty policy meetings to six o'clock and we work on meeting to, um, seven? Okay, so we'll make amendments.
Yeah, motion. Motion to amend the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Board of Education calendar so that all policy committee meetings will start at six P M. All curriculum committee meetings will start at, um, seven.
Questions coming?
Say God's not 2:20 anymore.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Carrie?
If we want.
Okay, then we need to vote on the calendar itself.
Were we going to do the same thing for personnel and clients?
I've always started at eight, so that would just put us to six forty-five. Doesn't matter when you're in one time. Let me ask you this, this personnel typically goes earlier, sometimes we sit here and wait till. Can we say six thirty? If I had started at six thirty?
Yeah.
But usually, no?
Yeah, yeah.
It might take a little bit longer.
Okay, so we're gonna amend the personnel committee meetings to start at six and the planning committee meetings to start at six thirty. Okay, if you want your motion.
Uh, motion to update the personnel meetings to start at six and planning meetings to start at six thirty.
Second.
Okay, second on that. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, you oppose? All right, so now let's actually vote on now amended twice calendar. A second for?
It's already, it's already second.
Um, so, all in favor of the amended calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move on to the next slide.
Uh, the policy committee needs to adopt, uh, the following policies. Four one one eight point one one two, four two one eight point one one two, and five one four five point five one. All of these are prohibition of sexual discrimination, sex discrimination, sexual harassment. Two, the first two are personnel, the second two is students.
Any second, second motion, any discussion on this item?
Just, just to clarify, we are separating these out from our broader harassment policy. These changes have been made to the law governing, governing the process for sexual harassment. Um, I'm sure Mr. Spaulding or Ms. Manning could answer any additional questions on it, but that's why we're breaking these out and then we're also going to be revisiting and revising our existing, uh, policy that deals with all other forms of harassment at a later date.
Hope I can speak, I mean, these laws promulgated from the Department of Ed in May and districts are required to follow the new guidelines which took effect in August. For the federal.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 You oppose?
A new draft instruction and a new, uh, new path. The one part O access output, really good highest, the academy. So these are.
Second. Wait, wait a second, go ahead.
Oh, so this position is for the academies to be different from the other student council. Uh, I don't know, so we all want to, you know, more information on.
Mary Ellen, can you speak to it? I'm not sure Sonder's here. Mary Ellen, I mean, I do. Oh, you are, sorry.
No, that's okay. Hello, everyone. And Mary Ellen, just so I just see, I see you popping on and off as well. Hi, this is Sonder Sanford. Um, and I'm here to talk with Damon Harris in collaboration in regards to establishing the academy's culture position at New Bern High School. Once a month, we meet with our advisory boards for each of the four academies and as the academies at New Bern High School are growing, there is a need for a more focused attention given to students' needs academies to ensure they follow the Perkins and the state requirements and career tech debt, that spoken sequence course curriculum. So the request for this position is to follow the guidelines and provide a more focused meditations to the students' needs academies.
Any questions about this?
Just as a point of discussion, I think the academies have been tremendously successful at our high school and really are one of our shining, like, one of the shines that we have going on there. And so I fully, fully support giving them what they need to make this program continue to grow.
I would just say to echo that, I mean, when Sonder graduated in twenty sixteen and he came through the academy and, and did no fault on their own, because the academies are relatively new. He was only able to graduate from, from one, even though he was involved because he just, he didn't have somebody really directing him and getting close to that he needs and that, this person will help to solve some of that problem.
All right, any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? You, Carrie?
The next one is for, for position, uh, district wide. So, and pay this for depth, that's the end.
Second.
Do you want to talk about the quality?
Sure. So, um, these powers will be, um, able to support district-wide students, students of the depth who have a hearing, uh, supporting teacher of the depth, rather. Um, we were able to bring back this year four students who are outplaced in, um, therapy programs because of their disability. Um, and that's the same with two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. These power educators will be supporting those four students as well as others throughout the district.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Carrie? Great.
Uh, motion to approve a contract between New Bern Board of Education and Monsignor, uh, Bubnouski matter for equitable experience in the nursing training program?
Second.
Explain this?
Hello, my name is Jenny, I am the new CNAT teacher at New Bern High School. Very happy to be here as a representation of the Health Academy as well as our making nursing students that we have. Um, I'm a registered nurse and a graduate of New Bern High School, so this is full circle for me to be back at my alma mater. So this is simply a contract renewal. We have worked with Monsignor Bubnouski in the past. Um, and the only language that had changed within the contract is the immunization portion. Um, they wanted it specified a little bit more in terms of the immunizations that the students and clinical instructors required in order to, um, uh, do clinical at the facility. Um, in addition to weekly COVID testing as a requirement for our students and our clinical instructors as well.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion, Carrie. Thank you.
Uh, made a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for COVID nineteen-related signage from Sign Pro, an amount of seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second motion and questions?
Then, I'm just curious, why didn't you show up the board?
That was the same question I had, this is coming as a bid waiver and I'm curious whether or not we got any, any quotes on this or went up the bid.
I will have Sonder, Sonder, can you talk to the signage?
Um, hi there, yes. Uh, just a clarification, so this is a digital signage at New Bern High School?
Digital? Digital signage for COVID?
No, this is COVID-related dollars.
COVID? COVID-related signage from Sign Pro?
So, Sonder, it's written COVID nineteen-related signage.
It looks like all the stickers on the walls, the bathrooms, that stuff. I mean, it is, I just don't understand why it didn't go out, or did it go out for bid and this is the highest? So this is difficult.
This was.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I mispoke, it is for the, the, uh, the COVID-related signage from Sign Pro.
I know, I, well, I can't speak to it, Sign Pro has been a very competitive partner of the Britten School System and have supported the work we've done from all avenues. But it is, it's, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if this is digital signage. I can't hear.
This was. This was for the COVID signage that we had to put up in all the schools before school started. This was from the state guidelines that, uh, wanting us to put up all these signs. We had went through Sign Pro because they were the quickest turnaround time. We had about a four-week turnaround on this. Um, so in order to get the signs posted in the schools, we had to go through Sign Pro for that. Yes.
So, for clarification, this is, this has already been done, this is just the bill?
Correct.
Usually goes the other way around.
He points to me, now I'll, I'll point to him, but, you know, we did get dollars from our CARES Act dollars, this is where it's coming from, it was money specifically allocated for these purposes. Um, and, and Matt's right, with everything going on and the planning and the quick turnaround, uh, to have it all out, we had COVID packages going out to every building. Uh, and even then, it wasn't fast enough because that was the one thing people were kind of scared about.
I was looking at the data, this was back in August, correct? So this would fall under summer authority? Well, no, it's.
Oh, you can breathe now. See my glasses are going foggy.
That's right, because we changed the amount this year for the first time ever, right?
Well, so summer authority for big waivers and purchases, like for actual things with the budget, that's different than the staff hiring where we.
We always used to have a cap.
Yeah, for staff hiring.
And big waivers. This is the first year we did it without the. But it's not the point, because we have the signage, we have.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have to say also, we looked at doing it in-house, but you needed a durable, uh, quality things to put down on the concrete, there are things on concrete, on the floor, on everything, so it wasn't just paper signs that we were making.
Yeah, I apologize, I missed the invoice date in reading this. So this is, this is for signage that we already have in place, this is not additional. Because that was my next question is, why are we spending this much on additional signage? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, so, did we determine that this was, happened under summer authority and doesn't need approval? Or we can guide to it anyway?
Well, it's on the agenda, I will prove it, we just got it.
Alright. So, any further questions about this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion, Carrie.
I make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for service work by First Line Electric, L L P, in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine sixty-six, eight seven. The source is Cafeteria.
Second? Same question?
So I'm gonna look to, you know, Hala and Kevin Leon and Kevin Payne, do you talk to this one?
Yeah, Kevin should be on, so I think he can.
I don't see my.
So I can speak to the second one? Yeah, I'm here, I can speak to the practical aspect. So, I think earlier there was a discussion regarding Alaski and the kitchen and the centralization. Um, to continue with that, which is something we would like to do, um, we're still gonna need to upgrade the electrical, so we had to put up four hundred ampere service. At the same time, we've run out of refrigerated space, we are maxed out across the district. We had to add too many cooler boxes, refrigerated boxes, as reported, as you see around the district. Uh, Alaski could not support that, so we had to upgrade the transformer. The good thing is that this transformer, then, will allow us to go ahead and do the other projects. We won't have to upgrade the electrical, so we'll be ready to support any, uh, centralization, kitchen expansions that we do at that, that location and that site. Um, the reason why time is of the essence was that the U S T A was requiring them, and I think Dan can speak to this more, as well as Woodsons, uh, we had to take delivery of certain stock. We didn't have time to R F D it out, so we had to get the electrical upgraded and get the new boxes in so we could accept the orders.
When, if the work is already done?
The work has started, it's not completed yet, we have the boxes. Uh, we're still waiting for that bolt, the, um, the bolt panel at the four, was it the two forty? Uh, we have was, uh, we're waiting for one panel to come in, I'll be in the next two days and then we'll do the full connection. Boxes are there, we just don't have it connected yet.
Did we not know about this before? Probably, you would think we haven't made that, that you don't have the, the right. So we don't learn it, so maybe we should, we should do it cheaper, we could have gone out a bit. Do you want Kevin to, uh, set up? Do you want Kevin to dress up?
No, no.
Okay. That's his presentation, but, uh, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Carrie?
Uh, I have H. Do you approve purchase order and bid waiver for installation of I wave ionizers? Twenty-seven thousand, eighteen hundred fifty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, COVID nineteen finance, if I'm good, of course. Is this Sonder?
It came in late, everything was coming in late. Kevin, do you want to talk about the ionizers at Smalley?
Yes, alright. So, as you know, Smalley windows do not open, uh, there was concern there, we wanted to make sure we get both, most, best technology out there to make sure, uh, mitigate any risk for the ventilation system. During this time, this was obviously covered timeframe, these ionizers were just not available. Uh, we'll say E S C was able to secure enough for us to do Smalley's school, this is for twenty-three ionizers. Uh, this included the installation, they had it go into each duct area, rooftops as well as ducts, the ducts, and cut a two-inch hole and then runs through both voltage wire. So, um, this was out of the entire school, so as this, this work has already been completed, but Smalley has twenty-three ionizers throughout all the U C A C systems. And this again mitigates, um, split U V light and potential for fire risk dispersion.
I feel like we had a presentation about this, correct?
Yes, you did. We did know about the availability of a space, this is the one we were very, 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 uh, glad to.
Was it, was it evening that I presented where we were with exhaust fans in the district, do you recall? And the heavy lift, we needed to get the building open, and that was the night that we talked about the ionizer.
Yeah, so that was before.
It was everything slow and delayed and.
This is essentially something we thought was, uh, we'd cover under summer authority, but it's difficult one time to show up. Any further questions on this? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Carrie?
Make a motion to approve the purchase order and bid waiver and M O U contract between the values of the school district of New Britain and let's see, nothing in action, first twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
Second. It's about time. We've talked about this a lot. This is where it's actually supposed to already be replaced this year and with all of this stuff, it didn't happen. Um, so, I, I don't know the details, because I'm just seeing it on here now, but I'm happy to see it because I know it's something that I saw, to Nancy years ago when I met, um, Phil Day, who's the founder of this, um, at a conference, and then we have, at that time, we only had one Connecticut, uh, district that was doing it, and now there are, there are like five or something, um, so, so we started doing it very quickly. So I don't know exactly what components this includes, and I.
I am, I was here about.
There's a course, there's a course and a community component, so there's a course for students to take to learn, um, leadership skills and things like that, and then they put it back into our community by mentoring, um, students that we are learning through or things like that, as part of the course. But it's similar to like, like the teacher preparation type class that we teach here, where there's a national curriculum that you must, and that's why you have to take, you know, you have, they got the pillars and there, there's a structure to it for that to start.
And it must be done six as well, and so, you're right, we had started it, COVID hit, everything hit. We do have a dedicated teacher at the high school who teaches the course now, um, and, and Wanda, oh, she's here.
I'm here.
I, I was looking up, but I can't.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay.
I have questions and questions.
Um, so we, so we have to have a six through eight component as well to feed into, and they're very specific about the students entering the course and what, what, what the profile is of the students entering, and it's around advocacy, that's it, and, and, and L I A, um, I think for me, what, what sold me is I was able to go to a, um, an annual conference that's run by students. Uh, the keynote speaker was a, is an L I A student, uh, from Florida, he actually came up. So it's about networking too, moving beyond New Britain's borders, even Connecticut's borders to start networking and, and, um, showing the possibilities for our, our Latinos in terms of advocating and, and, um, well, I want to come to the.
They got a conference at C C S two. C C S two.
Yes, so with this, but. Yes, the angle is to empower, um, Latino youth to lead and strengthen their communities, so, you know, they have four pillars, personal and cultural assets, excelling in education, serving the community and developing leadership skill. What I like about, best about the program is that it, one of the requirements is that we pair the students with younger learners at the elementary schools, and they can serve as tutors, but they have all their responsibilities within, um, the communities. Have any questions?
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Carrie?
Thank you.
Motion to approve the budget transfer for textbooks and online resources from Ista Higher Learning for World Language Program, and you want to coupon it one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Please, a second? Alright, um, any discussion?
We already approved the purchase on the consent, and then nothing was yet, so we can just move in when we over to actually declare it, kind of back on three seconds.
I also would note that this is a larger purchase than what was originally brought forward. Um, people who are willing and planning, uh, probably are aware, because we decided that we really need the new textbooks, or all were Spanish, not just the various course, because they haven't been replaced yet. How many years?
My daughter wasn't even born yet. And she's driving. No, I just gave it all that. Right, so friends, so right here.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm slow.
Alright, so, any further conversation about this? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 You oppose? Motion, Carrie.
Make a motion to accept the grant approval. So make a motion to accept the grant approval for one million eighty-seven dollars for general payments to align with.
Second?
Question on this? Do we need no discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion, Carrie. Any other issue that you said we were going to put on the agenda?
Motion to, uh, waive the fees for consolidated school list to New Britain preschool program for the twenty 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 twenty-one academic school year.
Further discussion on this item? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Carrie?
Uh, yeah, we have one for potential curriculum positions for, uh, the girls basketball team. The high, one of the whole.
It's a stipended position for basketball clubs? Is that sorry, it's up in the, uh, calendar?
Okay. So any conversation about this?
That's two C A point eight.
Uh, Bruno Piper, who, you can call her, yeah, that's one, uh, um.
Okay. Alright, so, do we need no further conversation on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion, Carrie.